We're going to start the meeting. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have a moment of silence, please? Roll call, correct?
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Here.
Counselor Schneider?
Here.
Counselor Tirina?
Here.
Counsel President Stickley?
Here.
We have five members present. We have a corner.
Counselors had time to review the prior meeting's minutes. Get a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counsel President Stickley and seconded by Counsel Heising. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Moving on with our committee reports. We had a Finance Committee meeting on February 19th.
Okay. Shane, Sarah, and myself in the committee were present along with Jamie Keith, Kevin Corren. One of the matters was a bill of parts of all parts, and he said that he'd gotten a price take to the fields, stripped the grass off, and renovated them so they would be softball playable as well. That cost was around $38,000, $39,000, so no matter that area. After discussion, we decided to table that because there was talk about possibly the Rotary donating the land to Dayona and the North Edge, which would make us able to put it in formal parts. I talked to the president of Rotary, and she said it sounded like a good idea to her, but they didn't have a meeting that week because the building was being renovated. But she was going to talk to everybody and see if they could do that. Then, discussion was we would have to put money into making actual fields in those four spots instead of taking $38,000. So we wanted to see what's going to happen first.
Right. I talked to somebody from Rotary as well, and they were like they just weren't interested in people doing it. So they said the same thing, but I agree, they got to take that back and discuss what they're going to want to do with it.
Right.
And with me sitting on here, I'm not going to...
Yeah, well, it sounded, she sounded optimistic. They would be willing to see that.
Work it out. Yeah, they have other plans, what they wanted to do, so. Okay.
Next thing was the matter of the JAG grant funds. Chief Chittin didn't explain why they were needed, and everybody thought it sounded like a good idea, so the recommendation to appropriate funds necessary moved by Counsel Heising, seconded by Counsel Schneider. It's three to zero, so that motion carried. The next one was a matter of the body camera footage shortage, and Chief Chittin has been working with Motorola and getting quotes on moving the body camera footage storage to a cloud-based system. All their body cameras are out, warranty. After explaining this, it sounded like it was a good deal to get replacements, have like a warranty on each one, so we didn't have to purchase that.
How long is the warranty?
When you first get it, it comes with a one-year warranty, and then you're able to buy up to five additional years through that. But those Vista cameras are all now when past that time, and so we can't buy any more warranties for them.
So the new system, we would be purchasing them?
Yeah.
Does that sound...
It would be what's called, what's called a video solutions as a service. So we'd be paying for body cameras, $695 per year per camera for that camera, and then after at least either 30 or 36 months, it would actually get a new model shipped to us. And anything that would go wrong during that time would be automatically replaced and rebuilt.
Nice.
Okay. So the recommendation to purchase a cloud-based system for the camera storage was moved by Counsel Heising, seconded by Counsel Chamberlain. That was three to zero mode again, and that was the end of the meeting.
Okay. So we have two recommendations from the Finance Committee. We need a motion for the recommendation to appropriate the funds needed for the JAG grant.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Recommendation to appropriate the funds needed for the JAG grant moved by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel Tirina. Any discussion? Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Tirina?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Okay. Now, our second one is a recommendation to purchase a camera footage storage cloud-based system for the police department. I will...
I have a question really quick. So there's 15 guys, right, on staff?
Correct.
Or not guys, but people who...
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So then that would be about $10,425 a year.
Correct. And then it's also moving our patrol car cameras to the system as well.
And that's how much per car?
That is $895 per car. So per year, I believe it comes up to around $26,000.
Total or just for the cars?
For total. Between the cars and the body cameras per year for us.
And the body cameras, $695?
I believe it was $695 per year per camera, and then it's $895 per year per camera for the cars.
We need a second, yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Recommendation to purchase a camera footage storage cloud-based system for the police department moved by Counsel Heising and seconded by Counsel President Stickley. Any discussion? Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Tirina?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Okay. Moving on to our department head reports. We have Chief Hessler.
Yeah. Wednesday, I meet with Clinton Township. They're going to pass their resolution and sign off on, they're the last of the signatures for the fire contract leaving the city, Clinton and Dover. Last week, we worked with the police department on a safety drill with the high school. It went well, and out of the warmer weather here, looking forward to get outside.
Questions?
Nothing too much new from Thursday. We did get over and get that retired 2012 Dodge Charger that we took out of service and donated that to Fort County Career Center for their automotive technologies class. Myself, Assistant Chief Partzak, and Lieutenant Rogers took that vehicle over Thursday afternoon. They were very appreciative of it, and it was a cool thing to do, and it's neat to meet them and kind of talk to them about what they do there. You know, they're basically going to tear that car apart and put it back together a whole bunch of times and just kind of have some very good learning experience and valuable hands-on stuff in the classroom for them, so I think that worked out well for us. And then, as I've mentioned, Ed Weedman is coming back next Monday, starting on March 11th, so that will put me back to full staff now. He'd asked for no big council thing since he hasn't worked here for two years in the past, so it's coming back to us. So I always try to give them...
You're just going to swear back and forth.
Yeah, I always give everybody the option whether...
Just tell them, "Well, go back from us."
I always give them the option whether they want to have, you know, a presentation from council or not, so since he was a prior employee, I would like them not to, so.
And did the car have all the lights and stuff? I think you said that.
We did keep the lights and siren on it. We did obviously take out the stickers and the other empty the hall. They were worried about the cameras if those were out of it, but we did leave the light on and siren into it.
Nice.
I don't remember whose idea you said that was, but tell them, "Good job."
Well, it originally came from the mayor because she went and visited for a while, or well, I think it was just a whole...
I actually represented the city where they have a meal, and all of the Wasean kids that are seniors out at Fort County, you sit with them and you get to know them and talk to them and what they're doing. And one of the police, actually, it was the medic, no, he's going into the police, but his dad's a medic here in Wasean. So he was explaining, so I got to go see what they do, and I seen, I think, a Napoleon squad car and maybe another one from another, and I'm like, "That is really a great idea." So I took it to him and said, you know, "The little bit of money that Wasean gets back from these old cars that have been run, you know, for many years, it'd be great if we could do that." And they ended up going to the shop because they didn't need it, and that's even better yet, so that they could be used for that. Yeah, it's how they post to the picture of it. It was really cool, yeah. And there's a lot of neat things that we can do with that, and I'm glad you followed through, thank you.
Who had the honor of driving it to its final receipt?
It was actually Lieutenant Rogers. It was his, he got that car when it was new and took it all the way until it got rotated down to the spare car.
Is that the one with the backseat that, the coil kind of came from?
No, I don't think that one was, but yeah.
That might have been.
What was the backseat like, raining?
Oh!
Oh my God! That's hilarious!
I'm sorry. It was all bad. The roof collected all the roosters and chickens in there.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that one.
Oh, really? Yeah. There's definitely some stories.
Coming at the time of the place.
Good use, good use.
The mayor.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Five A's, zero N's. Okay. Any other questions?
I don't know, Shane, do you have any more?
No questions.
Do you have a phone number for gentlemen?
Yeah, I did get that. I got that here.
I'll get it with you.
Keith?
All right. Update since Thursday. If you haven't been out to the pickleball courts, the fencing is all up. The only thing left is the two gates need to be installed and windbreak needs to be put in. They should be heading that part here in the next week or two. Looks very nice, and it should suit it very well. Homecoming Park, the Leggett Street playground equipment, we're going to start working on that. Rotary is going to work into getting new playground equipment there. We're going to try and get the wall cut down, the earth removed, get some stone in there for better drainage, and then raise the playground equipment up a little bit so that it isn't a swamp when they're playing on it, because that, right now, is our number one complaint of all the playgrounds is that. We've had some vandalism done to some of the other playground equipment, so we are going around checking that, and hopefully we will get someone from our insurance company to come out and do another inspection of our playground equipment to make sure that it is compliant and up to date. As was mentioned, they couldn't have the Rotary meeting the other day because they were installing the new carpet squares, so if you get a chance to go down there, it looks very nice, a lot better than the old carpet that was pulled out of there. The blind should be coming shortly, and we're also updating the HVAC system in that shelter house as well. And the number one question on everybody's minds so far this last two weeks is when we're going to start brush pickup. It will start the first part of April, during the first full week in April. Right now, the brush equipment's being used with our guys that are taking the city trees down that need to be removed, so it is not available for lawn pickup at this time. Now, obviously, if we have a large windstorm and we have a lot of branches down, we will break them free to take care of that, but otherwise, it is being utilized, and that's why we can't do it any earlier than the first part of...
If, I don't know if they already did, but they might put that on the city website or something. Actually, I was just going to say something to him, not only about that, but also the diameter and how you stack them, and I seen where somebody said they just took my tree down in front of my house, and then, you know, "Why are they taking them down?" And it was very, very comical to see so many people knew the rules of trees, that they talked them through it. You know, it could be disease, that's not your tree, that's a city tree, but that's something I think maybe we just every year need to update and put that out there with that, just kind of a little bit of, you know, brush pickup's going to start, the calendar, and how to do it, so, and if a company comes in and takes out a tree, they're responsible for taking that away, so.
We have put it out, referenced the brush pickup several times, but I will have Jan refresh it so it gets back up on the front of the page again for the census. And I think that's it, most people.
Good idea. I just had a question. Who are all the guys in Hy-Vee around town working? You know, somebody else asked.
That is a company that is doing a fiber optic installation for Brightspeed. Brightspeed is a company that bought out CenturyLink. So what they're doing is running a fiber optic cable along the old copper analog cables to offer fiber optic as well as analog services to their customers. Eighty percent of it is aerial, which is very good for us, because that means they're not boring through anything, because we've had several, several issues where pipes have been boring through from Omni Fiber. Omni Fiber has been good about giving them taken care of.
Neighborhoods that don't have overhead service, do they plan on coming to those neighborhoods as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Jamie?
I don't have much to report, other than we finished the month-end on Friday, so I really will look at providing those reports. The income tax revenue as of February 29th is up 33% or about $290,000 from last year.
Oh, nothing much really to report. Doing a little bit of work for all the departments and whatnot. There is a, we do have a resolution up for first read, which is kind of a technical or just a procedural requirement. As you will recall, we went through the process of annexing about nine parcels out there by the close to the cemetery, and that went through without a hitch with commissioners, but under the code, the council has to accept that annexation, and presuming council accepts it, then we would send certified copies to the auditor's office so it becomes official. So that's why it's on there. We just have it up on a first read. We have 120 days from when the petition was accepted by the commissioners, which was January 11th, so there's not a big rush. If we get close to that deadline by the third read, maybe we'll do it on emergency or something, but no reason not to do that. No reason to do that now. So, yeah, that's why it's 2024-9. That's really all I got to say. Say that, you know, on the report here, we're at the very bottom of the list.
Because it got it in last.
But that's where it should be, because we create the foundation there, so you can see the pot which all the other departments rest. And I always like to think of the Law Department as the symphony in the back of the earth. You don't want to gear the symphony by itself, but if you don't have the percussion, nothing else seems to work right.
That's right.
So...
We should just ask you about the trail and bed down.
I'm thinking McQuatters is a long, but less name. Okay, and speaking of that, let's move on into our legislation. So Resolution 2024-9 is a resolution accepting annexation petition for nine parcels. Needs to be placed on first reading.
I'll make that motion.
I will second that.
Motion to place Resolution 2024-9 on first reading moved by Counsel President Stickley and seconded by Counsel Heising. Any discussion? Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Tirina?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Five A's, zero N's, motion carries.
Okay, we have nothing under second and third reading. Mike, you can just scan over to that side. Cookies, they get done with the report, they're about... Okay, the business. We've got the report here. This is just to let everybody from the city know what goes on, and it's something that the mayor presents to council on the first meeting of March. And again, this is huge, comparable, but it's been a lot. I don't, you know, it's just for you guys to go through, see what every department has done throughout the year, which you guys were here, you knew what they did. The biggest thing that I do want to talk about is that administration has had a lot of changes this year, good changes. We've had retirement, we have people switch around, people who want to do other jobs within the city. So in 2023, we added new faces to many of the positions for the city of Wasean. The police department experienced the greatest number of changes. Nathan Hartzok was added to the department as the new Assistant Chief of Police. Officer Michael Olers was promoted to Sergeant. Alan Dunnett, Jordan Villarreal, and Jared Wood were added to full-time schedule. Rebecca Roller, Roller, became the new Administrative Assistant, and Martin Taylor as a full-time dispatcher. Other new faces in the city included Danny Markley as the Code Administrator, Michelle Wing as a Human Resource, and Jan Trope as the new Administrative Assistant to the mayor. So those are all the changes, and some of them are within, which is kind of nice to see. The Fire Department, I'm just looking, was it colored? Yeah. The Fire Department is notorious for the colored pictures. They like to use the ink. Just on here, bless you. But the biggest thing is the grants. With having Hannah in there, working with the administration of the Fire Department, they are doing great jobs. $328,285.71, you know, for the reinvestment, and those are great, and we just, I just got told that they got another one for $13,000 that came in to help pay for materials, so I was, I'm really happy with that. Their calls, total number of calls was 1,607. Sixty-one were for actual fires, what, calls for service was 61, actual fires was 21, and of those were structured fires. So 1,160 rescue and EMS medical services, and 32 were hazardous conditions with no fire, and then 149 service calls, and 167 good intent calls. I think, you know, I want those right. False alarms, so you can read through there and see everything that they did there. The police department is the one thing that I just want to talk about, I think, and I'm not going to go through it all, but more or less, Kevin has given reports, I think, a couple of times to council about the automotive crashes that have gone up quite a bit in the city, and they've been working diligently on this, trying to figure this out, but it's not just here, it's everywhere. Not sure if it's cell phones, not sure if people are just not heating to anything, but we have put up, we worked with somebody in the, now I don't mean department, I mean the people driving, but we've had people call, and they work together with some of the people in the community to try to slow traffic down on their roads, particularly when they've had accidents or, you know, just speeding, they're just speeding. So with that, I was, I really want that to be noted, you know, we need to understand that, that is so important. The second thing is that the juvenile calls were down, so that was really good to see too. And the rest is in there of all of the calls. You mean juvenile drivers or just juvenile? Juvenile calls, juvenile calls, yeah, which is, which is a good thing. That's what you, you know, I like hearing that. And let's see, going on to Keith, you guys can just see what they've been doing. They've done a lot, and I'm very impressed with some of the things that they've been doing. Unfortunately, with that job, we've had a lot of breaks in our lines, and we have old structure, and it seems like all public works did last year was chase those breaks and fix them, and, you know, fortunately, we're working on our grant for Oak Street, and probably a little bit on Fulton, and we can get some of this fixed. And again, the reason they're not fixed with asphalt is because they're going to go in and tear them up again, so that's always nice to see. Jamie, I liked seeing where she had no dings and nothing out of compliance for our audit, because that's huge, and when you get noted for that, I commend you for a lot of that. That was good, and the fact that our revenue has been up, unfortunately, I see we're hearing it's going down, but the 160-some people, and that's sad for IAC and for the city, and hopefully they can find work, but they're scavenging, you know, scavenging to find them. So that leads us to Mr. Wonderful beside me here. I just read a little bit.
Thank you.
He just put in more or less what he had been working on, but you're not...
Seems very vague. Seems very vague.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was the shortest report, actually, but honestly...
I've been super busy.
He's been busy.
Let me tell you how busy I am.
The trail has really come to busy. No, we're actually, he's been working diligently with the Fire Department, with our new chief, working on bettering the city of Wasean and what we can do, and also with the police department and things like that. The legal service for Keith, the annexation, having Kayla help with that was really great. So just a lot of good stuff. Great reading, when none of you have anything to do, it's really good to read, and you, when I look back and I read, I'm like, "Oh, yeah, I forgot about that." But the one thing that Keith did mention was the parks and the Rotary donated all of that amazing equipment to our park system, and them putting it in and helping the companies put them in. That, that's huge. And our pickleball court, you know, they've been screaming for quite a few years, and it's there, so thank you to you guys for allowing that, and for our Rotary, it's just, it's amazing. More for them to have to take care of, but hey, people are playing pickleball, people are, you know, the parks are great for kids down on that hill, that's, that's amazing to see that still. So, your report, there it is. So I only have one appointment. He's a little shady, but Shane had a question about the... Oh, what? I'm sorry.
Chief Chittin.
Yes.
The SOMA total, CMI total, tell me the difference.
So in September, we switched over our reporting system from CMI to SOMA. So that would, so the CMI total would have been all the calls for service from January 1st to September 20th, and then everything after September 20th would be what's called the SOMA.
And then we add those together for the 23 total?
Yeah. And I did return the...
Yes.
The prior year totals for year requests.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I left that out last year, so with that request, I put that back in there so you can kind of get a little bit of comparison between the years.
Just real quick, jump off the page, a huge increase in property patrol. Tell me about property patrol.
Yes. So what that is, is when our officers would, it's generally a midnight thing or maybe a late second shift, where they will actually go into a business parking lot, circle around, checking for any, you know, open doors, anything like that, making sure that everything is secure, finding if there's any cars parked in the parking lot, or lights on, or anything like that.
And they document this?
Yeah. Yeah, we started to try to document that to show that, you know, our third shifters are out doing some things, that we are checking this stuff. And it also helps should, you know, ever been, we have a break-in someday, we may have, you know, a little bit more of a timeframe, different things to help us out for that, any investigation purposes.
And there's no color in your report, but I still think it's just as important.
Oh, I think, I appreciate that. The finance director tells me to not use color, because it costs more, so...
We appreciate your cost-saving measures.
Chief, I got one question. There is other communities that I've driven through, and they've got speed deals that go on.
Yes.
That, do we have any, do we ever think about having?
We do have one that we move around the city from time to time. Generally, what we try to do is if we're getting complaints or anything about speeds, we'll post, put the box up. We, it's kind of neat, it has a few different settings on it to where, you know, first we can do it to where it doesn't even show the reading, we're just gathering data, and then we get the ones that actually show your speed, and it records all of that stuff to give us an idea of like time of day, how fast the violations are, different things like that. So we do have one box that we move around the city. Takes usually less, about a week and a half on a battery, then we have to bring it in, recharge it, for it takes about a full day of recharging the battery to get it back up.
So you think we're going to have more?
Oh, they're kind of expensive. They...
But if they slow people down?
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to... Yeah, and that's what we're trying to find out, I guess. We gather all that data and then we start, start going with it from there. Right now, one thing is sufficient enough for what we have, but we, like I said, we're able to move it throughout the city, post it on any signs, the street department has given us polls if we view them for, to, you know, a temporary type of thing. So that's what we do. It gathers some pretty wild records.
You can see how many cars are going through at a certain time and they're, well, and why, and you know, they're cutting through, they're trying to get downtown faster, they're trying to get out of town faster, and they'll cut through and stuff, and you see how many cars are going through like a dead-end street, but you know, you understand why, so it's kind of neat, the data on that.
And they, we were able to give Keith a bunch of data for the South Loop project, so he was kind of...
I've asked him to put it up for different traffic counts, that way we can, because on every grant, we have to have a daily traffic count, and it's a lot easier to put that box up than have, call ODOT or someone to come in and put the strips down. And it's just as good and even probably more accurate count.
Counts each vehicle.
Yeah, counts, counts per hour and then plus per speed, and it gives a whole bunch of different graphs and information. One thing I will say is, a lot of times the cars are not going as fast as people think they are.
Yes.
But we have learned that, you know, people are a little bit of a bad judge of speed as to, you know, all the cars are going, you know, fifty, sixty mile an hour all the time down the street, and we'll, we'll gather the data, it's not generally too bad over the speed limit, but if we do see it, we definitely... Burt Road is our biggest one right now, kind of comes in waves every few years, we gotta go, go hammer the, the speed patrols on Burt Road.
Just wondering.
So if somebody ran by that, would it be able to detect the speed? Ask me for a friend, Shane. Shane was just texting me.
Thank you. I don't think it would pick that up. Maybe on a bike, it would.
It's really underestimated, isn't it?
It doesn't register negative speeds.
Really, if I'm not fun in our life, right?
Any other questions?
About new business? Well, I just got one, I forgot. Keith, you said there was some damage to the playground equipment. Do we have security cameras up there or gangly or how expensive would it be?
Most of the areas, it would be cost prohibitive for the camera equipment. We've got some cameras in some of the parks, but in a lot of the areas, the playground equipment is not in an area that is close enough to camera as well. And it's one of those hit or miss, do you, you know, for $500 worth of damage, do you put $3,000 camera? If it doesn't happen that often, we've been very successful in catching the people that are doing the damage, so.
New business mayor, just wanted to check in on our fellow council member, Jeremy Simon. Was he excused tonight?
Yes, he was.
Okay.
He asked, he did. He asked about three weeks ago. He's on vacation right now, I think he's Hawaii.
There...
Maybe he'll buy some shirts.
Florida.
About Florida.
I thought it was Hawaii. Because it was an anniversary or something, I can't remember, but he did ask when it first came up. Okay, are we ready? We need a motion for the mayor's appointment to the District Five Integrating Committee, and that would be Keith Horvitz, and that's a three-year term.
I will follow.
Yes.
Whatever I need to do. You can be on the Integrating Committee, Keith.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the mayor's appointments to various boards and commissions, moved by Counsel Heising and seconded by Counsel President Stickley. Any discussion?
So we know that he should retire before then, right?
Not planning.
What is it?
It is the committee that oversees the Ohio Public Works Commission Grants Board of the Fund. It meets once a year, looks at all the applications, and then awards bonus points to certain applications before it gets sent on to the district committee, then on to the state for additional funding.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Tirina?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Hy-Vee Zero Nays, motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, good. I have nothing under old business.
Question, how's HR going?
Great, she's doing really good. People are going in and talking and she's actually doing some good changes, making it easier.
That's good news.
How their old business, they have to bring up homecoming, what are we thinking?
It's still pending. It's pending. We are meeting with them tomorrow at five, Wednesday at 5:00. There's just so many changes and I don't know, we'll have to see.
Because what we were told, it was that they're trying to shoot for a June date, right?
They are. It's because their carnival canceled on then, but it comes with a lot of help us. See what we can do to work it out.
And have we talked about the gala event? Did we talk about that?
I think we did the last meeting, didn't we talk about the gala?
I don't think so.
No, it was on, okay, yeah, the gala that took place, yeah.
That was awesome.
And it was a sold-out event, Bill Dorum works very hard on that with the chamber, and both bands were great. I was waiting for you to go up and steal some sticks and get moving on that.
Anything gets better each year.
It does. Well, it's, it's been going, my gosh, I think five, six years now, and I just think the vendors, the people that, you know, produce all the food and stuff in our local businesses is great and it's a lot of fun. We had two plus two, two tables and two others from the city, representative city, so I thought that was great and it's a good time. Thank you. A lot of things being built and created in those meetings or those things, and I like that. Okay, anything else? All right. We need a motion to approve the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve and pay the bills, as presented, moved by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel Heising. Any discussion? Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Tirina?
Yeah.
Counsel President Stickley?
Yes.
Hy-Vee Zero Nays, motion carries.
We need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
What is the deal?
Anybody?
I'm looking for...
I'll start it.
Motion to adjourn, moved by Counsel President Stickley and seconded by Counsel Heising. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.